I have seven o'clock. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Will the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Drier.
Present.
Counselor Irvin.
Here.
Youth representative. Counselor Fleck.
Here.
Counselor Merriday.
Here.
Counselor Savage. Counselor Stenit.
Here.
Mayor Sozzi.
Here. Will all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now we have a special presentation swearing in of the police officer.
So I'd like to introduce to you Colin Walsh Walsh, our newest officer, who's here. He's come to the podium. Colin has been a police officer about six years in Grants Pass and has come to us from Grants Pass. And would you introduce yourself and family members that are here?
Yes, my name is Colin Walsh, as he said. I'm excited to be here, and I'm here with my wife Jasmine and my son Carter.
Welcome. Mayor and counsel, do you have any questions of Officer Walsh?
Anyone? Any questions?
Just say welcome.
Thank you.
We're very happy to have you.
So we'll do the oaths now. You want to come up here?
If you would raise your right hand, I will be down for me. I, Colin Walsh, do solemnly swear that I will support and abide by the Constitution, do solemnly swear that I will support and abide by the Constitution of the United States and that I will support and abide by and enforce the Constitution and laws of the state of Oregon. And enforce the Constitution and the laws and the Constitution of the state of Oregon and the rules and regulations and the rules and regulations of the Cottage Grove Police Department and the Cottage Grove Police Department. And I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially discharge the duties of my police officer during my continuance there in, to the best of my ability, so help me God. Please.
And in addition to the oath of office that we just had, the department under Chief Growth has emphasized the Criminal Justice Code of Ethics from the Oregon Department of Public Safety Standards and Training. Every member of the current department has signed the Code of Ethics. The chief and staff are committed to upholding the Code of Ethics. Now, I would like Officer Walsh to please read this out loud, the Code of Ethics, and indicate your commitment to the objectives and ideals of the Code. He can come to the podium, then we can record you better.
As a criminal justice officer, my fundamental duty is to serve humankind, to safeguard lives and property, to protect all persons against deception, the weak against oppression or intimidation, and the peaceful against violence or disorder, and to respect the constitutional rights of all people to liberty, equality, and justice. I will keep my private life unsullied as an example to all, maintain courageous, calm in the face of danger, scorn, or ridicule, develop self-restraint, and be consistently mindful of the welfare of others. Honest in thought and deed in both my personal and official life, I will be exemplary in obtaining and obeying the laws of the land and the regulations of my department. Whether I see or hear of a confidential nature, or that is confided to me in my official capacity, will keep ever secret unless revelation is necessary in the performance of my duty. I will never act officiously or permit personal feelings, prejudices, animosities, or friendships to influence my decisions without compromise and with relentlessness. I will uphold the laws affecting the duties of my profession courteously and appropriately without fear or favor, malice or ill will, never employing unnecessary force or violence, and never accepting gratuities. I recognize my position as a symbol of public faith, and I accept it as a public trust to be held so long as I am true to the ethics of the Code of the Criminal Justice System. I will constantly strive to achieve these objectives and ideals, dedicating myself before God to my chosen profession. I swear before God to the above.
Now, fun part. This badge, it's not very heavy, but when you put it on, it gets pretty heavy with all the things you've just committed to. So I'd ask you, you're what? Like, what? Let me pin this on. Every time you let him this on, would you remember all the provisions of the oath and all the standards that you've agreed to? Mayor and counsel, I'd like to introduce a few other new members of the department. Brooke Crowe. She's here. There you go. Stand up, please. Brooke is our new administrative aide, and she started full-time today. She brings with her a bachelor's degree in accounting and over 10 years of administrative accounting and bookkeeping, and thank you for welcoming her. We're glad to have her. And also, please welcome William Hall Chappy, he likes to be called, as our new Cottage Grove Police Department Chaplain. He's been a chaplain for several years and is serving as the Goshen Pleasant Hill Fire Department Chaplain right now. He's a member of the Public Safety Chaplaincy, which is a state organization for chaplains. He's already made an impact by following up with our officers that responded to a fatal traffic accident on I-5 last Friday morning. One of our officers said, quote, "I just want to extend my thank you for having Chappy respond, having Chappy riding along with me for most of the day brought us mile back." And also for your information, tomorrow, we will be interviewing two candidates for captain. We are very excited about the prospects of these two individuals, and so we'll be dealing with doing that tomorrow afternoon. We are continuing to hire the officers, the other police officers in dispatch openings and recruiting those. We should have some interviews scheduled very soon for those positions. And work has begun on the chief recruitment process. We've got some materials put together already, and we're going to continue to do that, and hopefully by the middle of April, we'll be putting that out probably nationally for a chief.
Sir.
Good morning. I've been with the Chaplaincy for twelve and a half years.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, we have something fun to do tonight. We have a yearly If I Were Mayor competition for our younger folks, and we get to announce some winners tonight. We had, the first one is a video presentation. Did you want to show the video first?
Sure.
Okay, we'll show you the video. This is by Cassidy. I'm going to get this name wrong. Potzel? Potzel.
Not so long ago, the people of the United States of America experienced their greatest discord. In 1861, the battle began. Brothers fought against brothers and friends against friends. Times were hard, and in the midst of it all, a leader was recruited. Abraham Lincoln was tasked with reuniting the country, and it was no stoppage. He accomplished the unimaginable, and even though he did not know at the time, he became one of the greatest and most well-known presidents of the United States. Leaders like Abraham Lincoln are needed in today's society more than ever. These leaders are presidents, governors, senators, House representatives, and even mayor. If I were a mayor, my goal would be to bring my community together through relationship building. People will always have differing opinions, and no two people think exactly alike. This is why relationship building is so important. I, as a mayor, would do my very best to build lasting personalized relationships with everyone. I would strive to make myself approachable and open to conversation. This is not to say that I would agree with everyone. I am sure that there will be a difference of opinions, but I want to be able to walk away from conversations with not only a new acquaintance, but a new friend that I can continue to converse with. Not everything has to be this way or that way, black or white, conservative or liberal. As a mayor, I would lay a good foundation for tough but necessary conversations that will work towards bettering our community.
Cassidy is on our Youth Advisory Council, and normally will sit in this chair over here. She's not able to make it tonight.
Yeah, she might be coaching and swimming still.
She's on, yeah, she's a swimmer and lifeguards at our pool here, and she's very involved in that, so that may have kept her back. But she won first place, so we're really proud of Cassidy. Our next winner is first place, and it is for an essay writing contest, and she, her name is Sam Burns, and she unfortunately is not here tonight, and I kind of wonder because we jokingly said that she might have to read her essay here to everyone. So she is not here. So we'll put her award over here, too. All right. The next one was, we had a poster making competition, and I'm going to do second place first, and that is going to Callie Bigford. Is Callie here? All right. And we have one other poster award to give, and that's for first place, and that is going to be awarded to Titus Irvin. And lastly, we had some poster competition entries from Cresswell, even though they weren't technically supposed to be in this competition. We think it's fantastic that they made the effort to do this, and we were really proud of it, and there's talk about making them honorary Cottage Grove citizens, maybe a dual citizenship. I think that would be nice. And so I'm going to read the letter to them for all three. On behalf of Cottage Grove City Council, I would like to thank you for your entry in If I Were Mayor Contest. We enjoyed reviewing the entries, and we were impressed by the creativity and thoughtfulness expressed by all of the applicants. Please accept the attached certificate and gift card as recognition of appreciation for your submission. We hope that you continued interest and future involvement in local government and that you have opportunities to join organizations such as our Youth Advisory Council. And these are going to, oh, I'm going to see if I can get these names right. It's Adaya? What is it?
Adeya?
Adeya? Vidia? No?
Vidia.
Vidia. Okay. And Annika?
Annika.
I didn't get a single one. Well, come on up. Items to be added to the agenda. Appearance of interested citizens for items not on the agenda. This is a time for citizens comment on items not listed on the agenda for a maximum of 30 minutes. Individual speakers must be recognized by the presiding officer, provide their name and address, and will be allowed up to five minutes or less with council approval. Comments regarding any matter scheduled for public hearing may be provided only in that hearing. Comments on agenda items may be taken prior to council discussion on that item. The council will not engage in any discussion or make any decisions based on public comment at this time. However, the council may take comments under advisement for discussion and action at a future council meeting. All right.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Counsel. Amy Merriday, 205 Adams. I'm here tonight to say a little bit about a different city councils' minutes and meetings that I looked a little bit into, and that is the City of Salt Lake minutes from October 18th, 2024. And I just wanted to bring to your attention that at that meeting, they rezone public lands to a form-based district. It was including 83.43 acres that will be the future Other Side Village, which is not on the agenda. The lease that the City of Salt Lake gave to the Other Side Village is a 30-year lease at $1 a year, and their intention, the plan, is to build another, a village there that can continue with the Other Side Academy's work. I was concerned because one of the pieces of property was a landfill that was used from 1923 to 1962 by the City of Salt Lake, and hearing about the plans, which included rooms for 54 residents that would be from the program, and I was concerned because only three of those rooms will have ADA access. And when the Other Side Academy wants to find people to work in their village, they are looking for workers, and they are not looking for people who might need assistance. The City Planning Commission, I would like to note, approved this rent and change, and they were directed, the staff were directed, to develop the infrastructure, transportation services, the infrastructure for the 83-acre site. And the site will have the village coaches who do non-clinical case management, a motel that the intention is to be used as one of the enterprises to teach, I believe, hotel management and maintenance, whatnot. Their model being that they're going to be able to rent these rooms to city councilors, other organizations throughout the nation, and raise money for their programs by spreading the word, the good news of their methodology. The people that work in these rooms, the motel and their enterprises, as I understand, will be essentially volunteering their labor. I am concerned about the claims that no government assistance will be given when a planning commission is expected to provide and develop the infrastructure for the roads and sidewalks of an 83-acre parcel. Thank you for your time.
Jan Oxberry.
Hi, good evening. I'm Jan Oxberry, 115 North 14th Street. I come before you with two concerns. First, if it still hasn't been decided whether or not to fight the injunction requiring the Cottage Grove Police Department to follow Oregon Sanctuary Promise Act, I don't understand. When each of you took an oath to include upholding Oregon laws, I ask that you comply with your oaths. Second, in light of the revelation that there hasn't been oversight of the police department and none planned going forward, I highly recommend the establishment of a citizen review board. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all on the not on the agenda. Okay. Moving on to public hearings, I see none. Cassette Agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a move approval in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Resolutions and ordinances. Resolution authorizing Cottage Grove Garbage Service rate increase. Staff report by Assistant City Manager Jake Boone.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. At the February 27th, 2023 City Council meeting, the City Council reviewed the request from Cottage Grove Garbage Service to increase rates by 7.6%. The requested rate increase was based on significant increases in the costs of fuel, labor, and equipment since 2018. After discussion regarding the request, the council instructed staff to prepare a resolution to approve the 7.6% rate increase for Cottage Grove Garbage Service. This resolution, before you, adopts the rates as presented to the City Council at that previous meeting. Staff recommendation is that the City Council adopt the attached resolution approving the new solid waste collection and disposal rates for the Cottage Grove Garbage Service.
Any questions? Resolution number?
Madam Mayor, I move that the council adopt Resolution 2093.
Second.
We got a motion with a second? Any discussion? Will the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Irvin.
Aye.
Counselor Fleck.
Aye.
Counselor Merriday.
Aye.
Counselor Stenit.
Aye.
Counselor Drier.
Aye.
Mayor Sozzi.
Aye. Motion carries. All right. Item B. Ordinance amending the City of Cottage Grove Municipal Code Title 14 Land Use Citywide Zoning Map 77967 South Sixth Street. Report by Mr. Monken.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and Counsel. At the City Council meeting held on February 27th, council adopted ordinance number 3170, annexing .24 acres into the City of Cottage Grove. As a requirement of annexation per Section 18.04.090 of the Cottage Grove Municipal Code, the property owner is required to apply for a zone change of the subject property to redesignate the zoning from county to city zoning. Per subsection 14.47400, number one, the planning commission shall review and decide upon land use district map changes that do not involve comprehensive plan amendments through a type III application procedure. The planning commission held a public hearing for ZC 1-23 on March 15th, 2023, voting 5-0 in favor of applying the comprehensive plan designation of C2P Community Commercial to the subject property. As the planning commission does not have the ability to adopt an ordinance, council is now being asked to ratify the planning commission's decision to approve ZC 1-23 by adopting the prepared ordinance. It is recommended the City Council hold a vote on the attached ordinance. The ordinance was prepared and has been available for at least one week prior to this meeting. This ordinance could be adopted, yep, one week.
Counsel, ordinance number? Counselor Fleck.
Madam Mayor, I move that the council adopt ordinance number 3171.
Second.
We have a motion with a second? Any discussion? Will the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Stenit.
Aye.
Counselor Drier.
Aye.
Counselor Irvin.
Aye.
Counselor Fleck.
Aye.
Counselor Merriday.
Aye.
Mayor Sozzi.
Aye. Thank you. Business from the City Council. Cottage Grove Genealogical Society update. Staff report by City Manager Richard Myers.
So the Cottage Grove Genealogical Society is located in the community center, and this last couple of years, as we remodeled the building, they were moved from the back room up to the pool room after the pool was filled in and decommissioned. Tonight, we have Deborah Munziv here to give us a little report about how the move was and what they're seeing as a result of being in the new location in the community center.
Thank you for coming, Deborah.
Thank you. I want to thank the mayor and the council for this opportunity to be here this evening to represent the Cottage Grove Genealogical Society and to report on our successes in 2022. We had 167 visits by patrons and/or queries for information from all over the United States, and we even had a visitor from Scotland. Last October, we held our first family history event, Who Are Your Ancestors? It was a great success with high reviews, and we're already planning another one for October 7th in the community center. We have been actively working on two large projects: recataloging our library holdings with a service that allows us to share a link of our library catalog on our website, plus a preservation effort to scan and index tens of, index tens of thousands of South Lane obituaries that span over 120 years. We will soon have a searchable link on our new website, thanks to volunteer Elizabeth Peterson. Our move, I didn't address that in my thing, but I think I have a couple of seconds to do this. Our move was kind of hard because it was during COVID, and we worked really hard in there when the building was empty. I want to thank some city staff that worked on their own time to help us, and we love our new spot. It's closer to the front, it's easier and more accessible to seniors, so we do appreciate the new location very much, and we look forward to the open house next month. We tallied in 2022 2,557 volunteer hours. We think it's the largest yearly tally for our society, partly due to the preservation efforts of digitizing the obituary collection, and I want to thank the Cottage Grove Community Foundation and the Woodard Foundation for their support through a grant so we could purchase the necessary equipment for that preservation project. Like I said, we have a new website, it's CGgenealogy.org, and we're on Facebook. And even with our success, it was a year of adjustments. Like all other, all volunteer organizations, it was hard to get many of our volunteers to return to their level of commitment prior to COVID. I am grateful, as the president of the society, that others have stepped up to fill the gap, and with that said, I want to say we do have volunteer opportunities. Some can be done at home. If you have good keyboarding skills and a keen attention to detail, you can index. you can index obituaries at home. Cottage Grove Genealogical Society has also teamed up with Downtown Cottage Grove, and we're sponsoring the History Pubs on the second Tuesday of each month. And we've had some great speakers, and it's been a great success. Again, thanks to the City of Cottage Grove, Mayor and Council for your continued support for all of the historical organizations in Cottage Grove. Together, we can preserve today what will be history tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Item B. The Other Side Academy Presentation. Staff report by the City Manager.
Tonight, we have, do you want to introduce Counsel Irvin, since you've spent all day with him?
Please welcome Dave DeRoscher from the Other Side Academy.
Mayor and City Council. And City Council, thank you for the warm welcome and for allowing me to come and share with you what we're doing at the Other Side Academy. Couple of weeks ago, Greg, Joshua, Johanna and some others came to Utah to visit the Other Side Academy to learn about what we were doing there and left so inspired by what they saw that they reached out and asked if I would do a radio show, which we did a couple of days later, and then asked if I would come speak to their council and just share, and their mayor, and share with you what we're doing. I'm not here to make any changes in Cottage Grove, I'm not here for anything in return. But having been the population that I'm about to share with you, I think we have something to offer, and it's going to be up to you, the mayor, and your, your community members here to decide whether or not this is something that can work for Cottage Grove. We know how well it works. There's been many therapeutic communities around the country over the past 50 years that have been extremely efficacious and really helped people turn their lives around and become productive citizens in our community. But before I get into the model of the Other Side Academy, it's important that you understand who I once was. Don't let the jacket fool you or the picture I did have here at one time. That actually is me, it's just a long time ago. But I was the kind of kid that started at 11 years old, and I know we don't have much time, so I'm going to talk, I'm going to talk quickly, so try to track with me. Started young, Dad rode motorcycles, had friends over. They'd come over, I'd go to the refrigerator, get the first beer, take him to his friends. At the end, I'd collect those beers, I'd take the last drink. This was back in the 70s. It wasn't looked down upon like it is today and like it should have been then, but that's when it started for me. So I got a taste for beer, right? Then I was coming home from school when Dad was at work, and I was sneaking into his alcohol bottle and stealing alcohol and replacing it with water because he wasn't going to find out, right? And it didn't take him long to come home from work and realize that he wasn't getting the desired effect he was looking for, but I was. That conversation did not go well. Not long after that, I was smoking pot, and between the ages of 13 and 14, I did my first line of cocaine. Next slide. That really is, when it started for me, I thought I found God. Now, it's difficult enough to be a teenager in today's world or back then. I, it was completely out of control. It was very expensive, nobody was safe. I'd wait for neighbors to leave, I'd jump over the block wall, sneak into their house, steal whatever I could to support my habit. Things got really, really bad. I was the kind of kid that would go to school with a vial of, this is chapstick, by the way, with a vial of cocaine in my pocket, right? And when the teacher wasn't looking, right? I'd be in the back of the class, and I'd sit there and I'd pour coke between the pages of my schoolbook, whether it be history, math, English, whatever it was. And then when the teacher wasn't looking, I'd pull that bic pen apart and I'd snort coke in class. This went on for my freshman, sophomore, junior and high school year. It was a mess. It was difficult to be, to go through that kind of an experience. Somehow, I managed to graduate high school because school wasn't very difficult for me. But when I graduated from high school, I went from cocaine to methamphetamine. And that really is when the wheels fell off. They were already loose, make no mistake about it. That's when the wheels fell off. And I never set out to be a drug dealer, that wasn't the case. And instead of breaking into people's homes and stealing stuff, I was just buying some and selling some. And one thing led to another. Because of my behaviors, I believe it's next slide, right? I started getting arrested. My first prison term was two years, I got out for 59 days. My next prison term was five years, I got out for 60 days, so at least I'm staying out longer. And I'm getting better at it. My next term was six years, and my, and the term after that was 10 years. So it was a two-year term, a five-year term, a six-year term and a 10-year term with very little time out in between my prison terms. And as you can imagine, after my fourth prison term, the day I got out, I was on my way back. This time, I was in Huntington Beach, California. Some of you may have seen the TED Talk. I don't want to be too graphic about how things went, but there was a helicopter involved, and I did not want to pull over. I did not want to stop because I didn't want to go back to prison for the rest of my life. And I had told many of my friends, you can change this slide, please, that if I ever got red lighted again, I wasn't going to stop. And I took the police on a high-speed chase that ended in a pit maneuver that spun me out of control. I had wanton disregard for public safety. I did not want to stop and get arrested again and go back to prison for the rest of my life. So I went through that roadblock and kind of, human nature is funny, and I kind of hunkered down, right? I wanted them to take my life because I didn't want to go back to prison for the rest of my life, and thankfully, they didn't. I made the left-hand turn, they did the pit maneuver, spun me out of control up on an embankment and pulled me out of the vehicle and commenced to give me one of the worst beatings of my life. And the last thing that I remember hearing was, stop, stop, we're going to kill him. Now, I've taken Joseph, our founder, and Tim back to that location. It really is when things changed for me. When I went to jail and when I woke up in the infirmary and went to court the first time, my deal was 22 years. Now, if you've never faced that kind of time, it's pretty humbling, right? Two-year term, five-year term, six-year term, 10-year term, now I'm looking at 22 years. And I fought my case in the county jail for a very long time, hoping to get it down to something manageable like 15 years. So you're probably wondering what all this has to do with the Other Side Academy, right? So hopefully, to get it down to something like 15 years. But Judge Pacheco was resolute in his decision that I wasn't going to get 22 years, or wasn't going to get 15, I was going to get 22, whether I took it to trial or whether I pled out. So some of you may have heard of Delancey Street. I wasn't really busy in my cell at night, and I sat down and I wrote the judge a letter. And I said, Your Honor, it was four pages, front and back. I pled guilty to all of my charges, and I told them I was guilty, and I took a chance. I said, Your Honor, you've got nothing to lose. Delancey Street came to the jail, they interviewed me, they think they can help me. They've accepted me, why don't you give me a chance? And he said no for a long time. After I wrote that letter and went to court, right? I don't know, do you remember what a phone booth looks like? There's not a lot around anymore, but a little metal cage, and I was in ankle irons, waist irons and handcuffs. And I sat in that cage, and Judge Pacheco said, Mr. DeRoscher, against my better judgment, I'm going to give you the opportunity of a lifetime. And he let me go to Delancey Street, which was a two-year reeducation facility, but he suspended 22 years over my head. He says, You're pleading guilty today to all of your charges. I'm going to send you to Delancey Street, but when you get kicked out or when you split, I've got you for the rest of your life, now get out of my courtroom. I will never forget those words. I knew when I went that I had to stay. If I didn't, I'd be held accountable to the charges that I had pled guilty to. I went to a two-year program, and I stayed eight and a half years in a program. Now, let that sink in. When you think about programs today, the average length of stay is 30, 60, 90 days. This is a two-year program that I stayed in for eight and a half years. Two years to beat a 22-year prison sentence and six and a half more because I fell in love with the process, and for the first time in my life, I fell in love with me. And what I mean by that is I didn't look in the mirror and go, hey, Brad Pitt, you know, that's not what I mean when I said fall in love with me. What I mean was, I fell in love with me. I realized my life has purpose, it has meaning. I can help people, I love who I was becoming. I started to believe that I didn't have to live like that. I don't have to live in prison like I had become accustomed to. I, it was like hedonistic adaptation. Every time I went back to prison, I felt like that's where I belonged. And I got to a point in the state of California, going to prison, that I decided, you know what? This is where I'm going to spend my life. This is where I belong. I was wrong. Delancey Street showed me a different way, but they couldn't have done it in 30, 60 or 90 days. I stayed those two years, I asked to stay a third year, then Mimi Silbert came down from San Francisco, she's the president of Delancey Street, and she asked me to stay five more years. I'll never forget that conversation. She says, Dave, how much longer will you stay? I said, I don't know, Mimi. She says, How much longer will you stay? I said, I don't know, I just committed to a third year. She said, Will you stay five more years? And I thought about my life prior to that, 27 years of drug addiction, in and out of jails and prisons, my whole adult life, and I said yes. She says, Are you sure? I said, Are you? I didn't know why she was asking me, and a couple of months later, she flew me to San Francisco and asked if I would manage the Los Angeles facility. 250 residents living on property, residential, 15 vocational training schools that generated all of the revenue. They took no money from the government, city, county, state, federal government, nothing. We did it all ourselves. So I stayed an additional five years. I was in that organization for five and a half years before I graduated and went off into the workforce doing heavy equipment operating and whatnot, and then went up to the oil fields in the Bakken. Next slide, please. But today, I am the Executive Director with the Other Side Academy. What is the Other Side Academy? What we're not is a 30, 60, 90-day model. What we are is very long, very structured, very efficacious. It is unlike anything you're probably familiar with. My average student's been arrested over 25 times, so it's the long-term drug addict coupled with the criminal piece. We all know that's a very difficult population to help. We are completely free. We don't charge anybody anything to be there. We generate our own revenue through our social enterprises. You can go ahead and switch the slide, please, Richard. That's, that's what the House looks like about a year ago. Next slide. Our average student's been arrested over 25 times. 90% of them have been homeless, right? That's a really important piece. Not everybody was chronically homeless. They were situational homeless based on the decisions they were making in their life and how they were living their lives. Next slide, please. That kind of shows you a demographic for our population. That's Ian on the bottom. On top, there's Tiffany, right? Lived on the streets, under a bridge until she was about 13 years old and was doing drugs with her mom. Diego in the middle, I actually interviewed him in Salt Lake County Jail. He now runs our, our moving company. He was going to prison for a very long time, thought he was a gang member, right? You can see the tattoos on his neck, and he was doing things that he's very ashamed of today, and he's been with us for seven years. Now runs our moving company, and he would otherwise be in jail or in prison for the rest of his life. Greg is a staff member, and Tori on the bottom. It's hard for me to tell you about Tori. Some of you who were there met Tori. She was a drug addict for 20 years. Her father passed away, she had kids she didn't raise, and she was roaming the streets of Salt Lake City using her body as an ATM. That gives you some idea of the profile of our students, right? How do you get to the Other Side Academy? You walk through the front door like our dog did, take a seat on the bench, ask for an interview. We will interview you if we accept you. You start that day, you need nothing. If you write us a letter from the county jail, we will go to the county jails pre-sentence like they did me, right? We'll interview you if we accept you, then the LDA, the prosecutor and the judge can send you to the Other Side Academy with whatever time he or she deems necessary. Next slide, please. We can't take sex offenders, people who have committed arson, murder charges or dual diagnosis. Those are all, especially the bottom one is a lot, lot more nuanced that we can talk about here shortly. Next slide, please. What gets you kicked out? Violence, threats of violence, drug use or danger to our community. Mayor and City Council, we've been open for seven and a half years. We have never had a single, not one, single act of violence in the entire time that we've been open, and there's never been drugs in our facility. Our probation officer's name is Carl North, Salt Lake AP&amp;P. Never one single dirty drug test in our facility. For those of you who came to visit, you were able to talk to some of the students and get some of that information yourselves. But I know it sounds far-fetched, it isn't. Come see for yourself. The culture's so strong, and that's what makes us so efficacious. Next slide, please. How are we funded? This is important. We don't take any money from the government. The city, the county, the state, the federal government, rich mommy and daddy, Medicaid, nothing. Let me tell you why that's important. When I was going to jail, who was paying for me? Who was paying for me? You were. I was a burden. When I was going to prison, who was paying for me? You were. I was a burden. I knew what I was doing when I was doing it. I knew doing drugs was wrong, I knew committing crimes was wrong. I was doing it anyway, and I knew when I went to jail, to prison, there was going to be nothing expected of me, and you were going to pay my rent. Thank you. Please pay more in taxes because the food was horrible. Right? But that's the model, right? At the Other Side Academy, we don't charge the participants anything to be there, and we generate all of our own revenue. So the minute you get there, you become part of the solution. You are no longer part of the problem. Nobody should have paid for my recovery. I broke my life, I'm now responsible to fix it. That's why Delancey Street was so good at what they did. They allowed me to stay as long as I needed to, to really recalibrate my moral compass and become the 2.0 version of myself. I could not have got that in a short-term program. Next slide, please, Richard, thank you. This year, we'll, last year, we generated about $8.3 million in revenue through our social enterprises. We've got five, now six properties in Salt Lake. We've scaled the model into Denver, we have 65 students there. Again, all completely self-sustaining. It's very, very, very expensive to run these facilities because we are very large and we have a lot of people there. Next slide, please. Go back one slide, please. That moving company, right? Our moving company, I challenge you later, look up the Other Side movers, Google, Yelp, wherever you look. Hundreds and hundreds of five-star reviews. For those of you who are familiar with Salt Lake City, we have the Grand America Hotel, five-star hotel. That's where governors and presidents and whoever comes to Utah will stay at the Grand America. We were in a ballroom of 1,500 people. We won the Ernst &amp; Young Entrepreneurs of the Year with a moving company ran by ex-felons and ex-drug addicts. We kicked the heck out of Utah's elite. If you were going to start a business that was going to generate revenue as a social enterprise, ran by ex-felons and ex-drug addicts, would you start a moving company? Why are you laughing? We have experience moving your valuables. I say that tongue-in-cheek, but we are the number one rated moving company in the entire state. Our thrift stores are best in state. Our social enterprises are literally, hands down, the best social, best businesses you'll find in the entire state. Greg, we had the opportunity to go and, and go through our, our thrift store. Did you go on the moving company? No, it wasn't you, you were in construction, right? Okay. So the social enterprises generate the revenue, which gives us the opportunity to do its best for the students. Next slide, please, Richard, thank you. We have moving company, thrift boutiques, food service, construction, accounting, corporate development and others. Next slide, please, yeah. Next. Those are just some of the awards that we've won, and this is really important. When, when you think about who we are as an organization, ex-felons and ex-drug addicts, to be able to be amongst the elite in Utah does things to people that you couldn't even imagine. When we're in these rooms, we just recently were in a room with 1,600 people, and we won the Community Hero Award in the state of Utah. It was absolutely amazing to get awarded that with this population. But it just goes to show you that we are capable of doing anything we set our minds to if we're given the opportunity and an efficacious place that gives us the, the chance to live in a healthy community long enough for us to actually learn to do that. We're not, our goal isn't to get people clean and sober. We use that term so much in this state that I'm kidding when I say this, I wish it was a felony to use the term. The reason why I say that is, if you take me, and I'm a drug addict, and you put me in a cell by myself for a year and there's no drugs, what am I? I'm clean and sober. What do I do the day I get out?
Get high.
I get high. Getting clean and sober is the reward. When you come to the Other Side Academy and you stay two, three, four, five years, however long you stay, and you experience whole person change. Because ladies and gentlemen, every time I went to jail, it isn't because I was singing too loud in the church choir. I was a liar, I was a cheater, I was a thief, I was a manipulator, I was violent emotionally, I was violent verbally, I was violent physically. If I just get clean and sober and go back out into the community, what goes with me? Those behaviors. When you stay for a long time in the mode of practice and you get a chance to learn to be honest, learn to be accountable, learn to have integrity, learn to be responsible, you get clean and sober for free, you fix the drug problem, you never even address it. Organizations like Delancey Street, where I went, have been around for 51 years since 1971. There's five of them in the country. They've graduated 30,000 people back into the community as successful members. Trosa in North Carolina has been around for 30 years, two-year social, two-year therapeutic community. Habilitat in Hawaii has been around since 1971 also. We've been all over the world, San Patrino, 1,500 residents living on property, four-year program. The longer you are in treatment, the better your odds of success. It's fascinating to me, next slide, please. Next. It's fascinating to me that we know the dosage effect is true. The longer you're in treatment, the better your odds of success. But today's model is 30, 60 or 90 days. Next slide, please. We'll go to the next one. So, right, there you go. So today, maybe not here in Cottage Grove because there doesn't seem to be a lot of treatment facilities here, but in other areas of the world, particularly Utah, there's hundreds of treatment facilities, Los Angeles, Cal, all over the place. If you go to, if I go to a, a treatment facility, what's the first question they ask me?[1694.79] Who said it? Who's your insurance? Right. How much money do you have? I don't have any. Go die. Now, they don't say go die. I don't mean that, but if I'm a drug addict and I go to a treatment facility and I don't have the money to pay for it, I can't stay. If I do have the money to pay for it, it's not mine. Mom and dad mortgaged their house for the sixth time. They paid $30,000 and what day do I have to leave on?
Your money runs out.
The day the money runs out. Counsel and mayor, the model in this country is broken. Not the people who we're trying to help, but the model is broken. I literally just got back from India. I'll be in London here in a couple of weeks. I go all over the world talking about this and people are starting to listen. I'm all over the state of Utah talking about it to governors and mayors across our country. People are starting to pay attention. The longer you are in treatment, the better your odds of success. When you go to that 30-day model and you've got to pay $30,000 and you have to leave the day the funding runs out and you go back out and you re-offend, and when I tell them, "You guys, I'm not ready. I can't leave yet. I'm going to re-offend." "Dave, pack your bags. It's time to go. You have to leave. We need the bed space for funding." These organizations are built around a funding model, not so much a helping model. And it isn't the people that work there, they're incredible people. I'm friends with all of our treatment facilities across our state. The model's broken. I challenge you, there is no proof, there is no science anywhere on the planet that says 30, 60 or 90 days is the optimal time. It doesn't exist. Forty-five years ago, when treatment facilities popped up around this country, the average length of stay was 28 days. Why is that? Not close. It became insurance, but it was 28 days because the average American had two weeks of sick pay and two weeks of vacation. Forty-five years ago, when it started, it was mostly alcoholics going so they could take 28 days off of work. Now it's 30, 60 or 90 days, depending on what your insurance will cover. Could you imagine if you had cancer and you only had a certain amount of money and I said, "Well, we can treat..." You need 12 treatments, but you have enough money for two. Still want them? That's the model today. So at the Other Side Academy, we are long, we are structured, we are completely free, we are very, very efficacious, we are hard. Our average student has spent, has six years of incarceration suspended over their heads. Assume $50,000 a year for incarceration, you guys do the math. It's incredible what we've been able to save the state. Next slide, Richard. Therapeutic communities and TC models followed by the Other Side Academy have been extensively researched for over the last 60 years. We're extremely efficacious. There's a lot of papers that have been written about a therapeutic community that you can do the research on. Next, there you go. Hundred percent, are you ready? I already shared this with you. Hundred percent of our students have passed all of their drug tests through adult parole and probation. We've never had a dirty drug test at the Other Side Academy. Next. Completion comparison, duration for 90 days, you guys can read that, right? Duration for 90 days or three months, 30% dropout within the first 30 days. That's a typical drug rehab. 50% or more drop out in the first three months. The Other Side Academy, duration's two and a half years, 30 months, 25% dropout rate in the first 30 days, 49% dropout by the end of the month. About half the people who start will wash out. Of the other half, next slide, please. If you stay two and a half years or longer at the Other Side Academy, you have a 74% chance of being DCE, drug-free, crime-free and unemployed. If you stay three years or longer, it's upwards of 85%. For those who've stayed with us for four years or longer, it's over 90%. When you talk about recidivism rates in this country, they're through the roof and depending on who you ask, it's 60%, 70%, it's 100%. I got arrested countless times. I had 100% recidivism. My students have been arrested over 25 times, on average. They have a 100% recidivism. If you stay four years or longer, it's upwards of 95% do not recidivate. It's called the dosage effect. Could I have changed in one day? No. Could I have done it in two? No. Could I have done it in 30? No. When I turn around, my old lifestyle is right behind me. It still has its talons in me. My phone still has all my toxic relationships in it. We don't change in 30 days. We get clean and sober. The longer you're in a therapeutic community, the more your circle of influence changes, the more you learn to tell the truth, the more you learn to go to work, the more you learn the skills that are necessary to be a productive member in our community. When you come to visit, I will show you this, as I have others that have been there. 100% of our graduates upon graduation, when they're done being a student, we have a full-time job for them. Anywhere from 17 to about $27 or $28 an hour, depending on their skill set. The day they graduate, they've got a full-time job. I do not put them on public transportation. I hand them car keys. We have 56 automobiles in our fleet. Give them the car keys to drive to and from work, to and from work. They don't have to ride tracks. They don't have to walk down the street with nothing, right? Because a lot of stuff can happen. They go back and forth to work. They go across the street to graduate housing if all you did was stay with us for two years. You stay in graduate housing for one year. You go through a financial literacy class, you are required to save $5,000. At the end of that year, we match it dollar for dollar. Now you've been with us for two years as a student, one year as a graduate. You saved five. If that's all you saved, we give you five. Go get your apartment. You still have money left. If you stay with us for three years as a student, go to graduate housing for one year as a graduate, you're required to save five, go through the financial literacy classes, we match it two to one. What do you think happens when a student leaves? And I beg you to find another program that doesn't. It doesn't exist. There isn't one in the world that does what we do. We are the only program on the globe, on the earth, that does this. We will help finance it. We have apartments and apartment managers and apartment rental agencies that rent to our graduates. So every single one of our graduates have someplace to live once they graduate and leave our property. We've checked all those boxes. The two most important times in your stay are when you get there, how do you integrate in, and when you leave, how do you segue out successfully back into the community as a productive member? Next slide, please. Eighty-eight percent of our graduates have remained crime-free. That depends on what length of stay. Next, please. Student with five years suspended sentences over their head are 236 more likely, times more likely to stay. Next, please, Richard. Thank you. Free to attend, willing to commit to two and a half years, can walk in and ask for an interview, can write us from jail. I've explained all that. Next slide, please, Richard. Thank you. That's Ian, before and after. Next. That's Leticia, before and after. Leticia now helps run our legal department. She deals with public defenders, DA's, judges, sheriffs, the jails, families, you name it. That woman you see in that picture had been arrested over 40 times. How do I know this model works? I changed. Next slide, please. There's one more. Is it in there? No, it's not there. Okay. So, a couple of things to add. We are long, as long as it needs to be. Anybody that believes that a prescribed day is the day that a drug addict is ready, needs more help than I do. Anybody who thinks that Dave DeRocheur, after 27 years of drug addiction, four prison terms in the state of California, which is high school with knives, they can't teach that in school, how to help me. There's no such class for that, what I had to go through. It took my peers at Delancey Street and many years to unwind some of those behaviors and make me see the error in my ways. That's why it works so well. Long, structured, free, we can do what's best for the student. They can stay as long as they need to. When they graduate, we've got everything taken care of on the backend so they can reintegrate back into the community successfully. Thank you. Any questions?
Counselor Mary Day.
Yes, you said you would explain the dual diagnosis.
Yeah, so the dual diagnosis, we're not a medical facility, so if you actually require medication, then we can't help you there because we're not a medical facility. But here's the thing, and I tell sheriffs this and they're starting to listen, especially in Utah, we're creating drug addicts in our jails. I'm going to tell you why. Oftentimes, I'll interview somebody in jail and they'll tell me they're on medication. I'll go, "What are you on medication for? Anxiety and depression." You show me a drug addict who's running from the law like I was, who isn't suffering from anxiety, right? I'm running for probation, I'm running for parole, I'm in a high-speed chase. I've got anxiety. It is situational. The minute I get arrested, what am I? Depressed. I can go to a counselor, end the jail and be on four medications by the end of the night. Challenge me and have me arrested, I'll prove my point. I don't need them, but I know how to get them. So I do interviews in jails and I ask people all the time, "You're on medication?" "Yeah." "Do you need it?" "No." "Why are you taking it?" "Well, I put it in my teeth and gum right here and I take it back to my cell and I sell it for soups. I sell it for coffee." It's fascinating what's happening. I say, "Well, you can't come to the Other Side Academy if you're on medication." They go back to the doctor. They get a clean bill of health that says they don't require any medication. Then why'd they put you on it a month ago? We are creating drug addicts in our jails. Most of the jails now are putting people on medications that don't actually require it. And here's the other thing, if I break my femur and I show you an X-ray, everybody in this room can look at it and go, "Yep, it's broken." But I can go to you as a therapist, right? And get diagnosed with depression. Go to you as a therapist, get diagnosed with anxiety. Go to you as a therapist, get diagnosed with PTSD. It is so arbitrary, we are diagnosing people and putting them on medications when they don't need it. And I promise you, I know what to say to the doctors. I can be on medications too and I don't need them. So we're careful about who we accept. Do you actually require medication? If you've got schizophrenia, schizoaffective or things like that, then the Other Side Academy isn't the place for you, but the Other Side Village is. It is completely designed specifically for people with severe mental health issues and physical disabilities, just not the academy.
Could you explain a little more about that? The Other Side Village?
The Other Side Village is unlike anything you've ever seen. So, we've gone all over the world, San Patrino in Italy, Spain, we've gone to La Fajada. They generate about $20 million a year making jams and marmalades and 75% of the workforce are people with severe mental health issues. We go to Community First. Some of you may be familiar with Community First in Austin, Texas. 51 acres of land was phase one, 350 tiny homes for chronically homeless people that really are chronically homeless. I was there, I've been there a dozen times. Alan Graham, who's the president, my first time there, I'm in a golf cart going down one of the streets. There's a gentleman in a wheelchair and he has no legs and he has a wrench in his hand and he's taking the wheel off his truck and I go, "Stop the cart." I said, "Hey buddy, what are you doing?" He goes, "I'm taking the wheel off my truck." I says, "You drive that thing?" He says, "Yeah, the controls are on the steering wheel." I said, "Why are you taking the wheel off your truck?" He says, "I'm painting it red like the other ones." I'll never forget this experience. Where was he six months ago? He's in a wheelchair, he's driving a vehicle, he's taking the wheel off his own truck, right? Painting it. His life has meaning and it has purpose. Community First, phase one, had 51 acres of land and about 350 small homes, permanent housing for the chronically homeless. They allow drug use and drinking there. The Other Side Academy will not. It'll be a clean and sober environment. We've already started. We've got about 10, what we refer to as neighbors, at a temporary facility. As we canvass the streets of Salt Lake City to all 5,000 or so homeless, the vast majority do not want to live like that anymore. The problem is they have no real options. If you go to the road home in Salt Lake City, you can't take your backpack off or your shoes because you're going to get robbed. Then you might if you keep them on. It's very dangerous. Most people would rather live in a group of their own peers for their own safety. There is no place available to them to go to live a value-centered life of integrity where it is clean and it's sober and they're safe. It is going to have social enterprises, dog park, hair salon, coffee shop. We already have a donut shop that's almost ready. We're going to have businesses there. They can work there if they want. Some people are capable of working an hour a day. Some people are capable of working 12 hours a day. We'll figure out what your capabilities are and if you want to work in the social enterprises, you can. But it'll be completely self-contained. It'll be a beautiful opportunity for people to live amongst their peers. It's going to be an incredible, incredible opportunity for people. We've again, gone to Eden Village in Springfield, Missouri, Austin, Texas and other places to visit this model. In a couple of weeks, we'll be in London visiting about five democratic therapeutic communities to see how they're doing it. We're going to do it right and help people have a better life. Thank you so much. You're welcome.
Counselor Drer.
Mayor, counsel, thank you. Anything that we would be doing in our community would need to be open and available for all of our community members. Can you tell me about your policies and how you advance diversity, equity, inclusion or incorporate trauma-informed care? I can understand that the people you're serving, while probably high-functioning given who you screen out, have a lot of trauma in their life, especially being incarcerated so many times. So how do you approach diversity, equity and inclusion in your services and trauma-informed care?
If you go backwards to the slides, you'll see the diversity in our program. When I had the five or six students that were all there, we were as diverse as we possibly can be in Utah. Unfortunately, it's, I don't know, 90% Caucasian, but we have a very, we're very diverse.
I'm sorry. My question is about your policies around diversity, equity and inclusion, not a picture of who you're serving.
Well, we'll take anybody. There's not a policy, anybody, doesn't matter what your background is, if we interview, we'll accept. There's no policy in place. We want to help everybody. So the picture kind of illustrates that.
So when you're working, if I may, Mayor, when you're working with really vulnerable people, what kind of oversight do you have without policies about serving people equitably? How do you make sure that vulnerable people are not being taken advantage of?
Do I look vulnerable to you? I am the population you're talking about. I am that population that had trauma. I've been to prison many, many times. Not everybody falls under that purview. Some do and then we have special help for them. But at the Other Side Academy, I did not need that kind of treatment. I needed long-term behavior change. The problem today is not everybody who comes to us has that, is going to respond to that type of therapy. Some people need what Delancey Street, what Trosa, what Habilitat has to offer. When we talk about equity, everybody, we want everybody at the Other Side Academy. There's, when we talk about policy, what we don't do is say, "Well, you can't because you're this and you can because you're this." We interview and accept anybody who's willing to come and get help. I hope that helps answer the question.
Not quite, but that's all right.
Okay.
Counselor Flack. So I would envision that your operation would need a pretty large metropolitan area to develop the revenue to support the folks. What's kind of your minimum model, do you think, that it'd be able to sustain itself?
Yeah, so we've grown considerably in Salt Lake City because we've been so effective at changing lives. So many people want to come there and now we've got people there from all over the country. So we've grown considerably, and that means we have to grow the social enterprises in order to sustain ourselves. But we have a few other organizations around the country. Harvest Academy in Iowa has about 10 people, and they're actually self-sufficient at this point. I'll be in Philadelphia here in a couple of weeks. We have an organization there called Soul Recovery Academy, that one of my graduates has actually gone out and helped them infuse the culture there, and they're generating enough revenue to sustain themselves also. So depending on the size of the population, that will dictate what you need to generate revenue. So if you only had 20 people and you had a couple of social enterprises, then you could probably sustain yourself. We've only gotten that big because we've been so successful, and Denver's completely blowing up. Because the problem is, the treatment facilities aren't enough. The size of the solution does not match the size of the problem. And when you think about the problem today, 30, 60, or 90 days just is not enough to sustain whole-person change. So people are coming from all over the country to study the model because they want to replicate the model in their city.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
And again, I came by an invitation to share with you what we're doing in Salt Lake. I want to extend an invitation to anybody who wants to come to Salt Lake to see firsthand. I can stand up here and tell you about The Other Side Academy all day long. Until you see it, it's unlike anything you've ever seen. When you walk in, you know you're on sacred ground. I say all the time that it's a perfect place run by imperfect people. Delancey Street didn't last 51 years, Habilitat 51 years, or us eight years, with the number of graduates we have successfully back into the community because it's not working. It's an incredible model because community is the method. Literally, community is the method. And in most treatment facilities, when you get there, you don't even go to work. You're therapized all day, you know, your pants are on sagging, your hat's on crooked, that kind of thing, right? You've got your cell phone, therapy, go out and have a cigarette, therapy, go and have a cigarette. 30 days later, you have to go out into the community and get a job. You have no idea how to work. What I mean by that is, go to work on time, go to break, come back on time, lunch, come back on time, afternoon break, come back on time, do it again tomorrow, have a good attitude, follow simple instructions. Do that for hundreds of days in a row at The Other Side Academy, and it becomes what, who you are, not just what you do. That work component is the Petri dish. It is the most important piece. Because I go into jails and prisons all over the country and do presentations to inmates, and they all tell me they don't know how to work. Well then, why isn't that where you're at? Because what you know how to do is where you're at right now. If you knew how to work, that's where you'd be. Most people in this room know how to work. You all go to work every day. But I didn't know how to do it. I thought I did. But I didn't know how to go to work, be on time, have a good attitude, follow simple instructions, and do it again the next day. I've lost, you know, all 50 jobs I ever had in quick order because I didn't know how to work. So that piece is really, really important. That's why I've got organizations all over Utah, dozens of them, they've experienced it, that hire our graduates the day they graduate because they have such a monster work ethic, and they're such good employees. I mean, big organizations.
I was fortunate enough to spend quite a bit of time today talking with you, and I have to say, one of the things that really struck me is when you got a call today, and it was your CEO.
It was my CEO, yep.
And he was saying that something that someone that was in one of your facilities was saying is that it's the family piece that they consider their other, the other people in there with them, you're a family. And a lot of, for a lot of people in those positions, that's what they're missing, is that family piece. And so, a lot of respect for that, that you can create that in your facility.
Yeah, and the person that she's talking about happens to be my son. I've got three boys that I did not raise. I don't know how to put it any other way, but I wasn't a dad. I fathered them, but I was not their dad. I was too busy chasing the lifestyle and going in and out of prison. And three of my boys, two of them in particular, learned to be me in my absence. So my middle boy is now at my Denver facility, and he does, he is LGBTQ, and we take everybody. I don't share that with a lot of people because it doesn't usually come up, if that's the case. And he went to Trosa in North Carolina, 550 people, therapeutic community, but it was too big. We'll never get that big because we want that family feel. We want to know everybody, we want everybody to know everybody. And when we got him to the Denver facility, a couple of weeks later, he said, this is home. He feels loved, he feels heard, he feels seen. And that's all of our population. For those of you who got the opportunity to come, you can sense that when you get there, it's unlike anything you've ever experienced.
Could you touch on, you know, these, where people are coming from? We talked quite a bit about sentencing motivation, but what you've seen in trends over just walk-ins?
When we first started at The Other Side Academy in Salt Lake City, nobody knew who we were, right? It's kind of like me coming here, who's this guy, right? Nobody knows who you are. So when we very first started, we were doing presentations to judges, DAs, public defenders, LDAs and the like. And the first cadre of people that came to us for probably the first year or two were coming directly from the courts. They'd write us a letter from the county jail pre-sentence. We'd go, we'd do the interview, and then the judge could send them to us like they did me to Delancey Street. But over the years, that's changed. Now we're so much more well-known across the country that I'd say 70, 60 to 70% of our students now are walk-ins. Couple of things have happened. The sentencing guidelines have changed dramatically in this country, and we're killing more people than we're helping because we're not holding people accountable. And what I mean by that is, when I went to Delancey Street, I had a 22-year prison sentence suspended over my head, and I deserved that 22-year prison sentence. If it wasn't for the grace of God and the mercy and the grace, I would still be in prison today, 18 years later, as well I should be if I didn't get the opportunity to go to Delancey Street. But now we're not sentencing people to long sentences anymore, so the incentive to go to a long program isn't there anymore. Delancey Street in Los Angeles, when I was there, had 275 people. They're under 15 now. I believe Delancey Street's dying because the state of California is not sentencing anybody either. And this is important to know, and it goes against today's narrative, that jails and prisons saved my life. Every second, every minute, every hour, day, week, month, and year that I did, I am grateful for. If it wasn't for prison, I wouldn't be here today. I'd be dead. And you might be too, because the arc of criminal behavior was getting out of hand. You will never meet a bank robber whose first crime was robbing a bank. And I know I'm off-topic a little bit, there's a reason why I'm going here. You won't. You meet a bank robber, he started by stealing a Dremel from Walmart, then a chainsaw from Lowe's, then, I don't know, a purse out of your car, and then broke into your home, right? That arc of criminality goes like this. If we don't stop it down here, how bad does it get? How many lives do we lose? We need to be held accountable. Jails and prisons saved my life. And the reason why, can I ask real quick, everybody here, is the problem in our community getting worse or is it getting better? It's the same. Our response to it is worse. We're not holding people accountable anymore, and we're losing lives because of it. Every single county jail in this country, and believe me, I'm on a soapbox, every county jail needs a detox on the front end. The minute you arrest me, right? Nowadays, I get arrested, doesn't matter what the crime is, I'm going to get released eight hours later with a promise to appear. If you think I'm going to court eight hours later, you're crazier than I am committing crimes. I'm sick, I need drugs, I'm going back to the drug dealers to pick up. Now, if you arrest me for a petty crime associated with my drug abuse, you hold me in the county jail for 30 years, I am forced to detox. Now I'm clean 30 or 60 days later, and you offer me all these different options. What do you think my chances of success are when I get the options to go get help while I'm clean and sober and I'm no longer dope sick? We're doing it wrong. We need to use our jails and use our prisons wiser. I'm in the process right now in Utah of working with a group of people to transform one of the prisons into a TOSA-esque therapeutic community on the inside, and have training and social enterprises, and turn it into a nonprofit, so the residents, while they're there, have the option of working and making money. So when they leave the prison, they've got something and they can go make something of their lives. It's fascinating what we're trying to do. But we've got to be smarter. When you break the cycle and you arrest me, and you release me eight hours later, you lost the ability to help me. Threw it away. We have to hold me a little. I'm not saying, sentence me to 10 years because I stole a chainsaw. What I'm saying is, keep me long enough, force me to get clean. I have no choice but to get clean. Then offer me all these options. Now, if the crime is petty, give me the 60-day option. If it's more serious, the two-year option. Mr. Grocer, I'm going to send you to the Delancey Street for two years. If you complete it, we'll adjudicate your charges. If you don't, you serve your time. That's holding people accountable. That is love. Hold me accountable. That's love. When I know what I was doing was wrong and I wasn't being held accountable, that's not love, that's enabling. And I don't know that there's any drug addict or any criminal out there that doesn't know the difference between right and wrong. I certainly did. I knew what I was doing was wrong, I did it anyway. And in today's world, right, so does everybody else. And if they know when they get arrested, they're going to get released, where's the incentive to change? I know I'm going in and out of jail, I'm going to be back again in no time flat. Go to California, I went to a restaurant not too long ago, and I'll end with this. We got out of our car, it was a nice restaurant, the signage was everywhere, take your luggage out of the car with you. There was 25,600 car break-ins that year, zero prosecutions. Why do you think there were so many? Why should I be allowed to do that? I shouldn't. Why are the Walmarts closing in Portland? Because you can walk in with a grocery cart, you can fill it up and walk out, and they can't stop you. They're closing the Walmarts. Hundreds of jobs are being taken away from people because the drug-addict criminal is the protected class. Why isn't the hard-working American citizen who pays his taxes the protected class? I should not be allowed to do that. And that's how we have to start thinking about the problem if we want to solve the Any other questions?
Counselor Flack.
Just one more comment, and I actually, your, you know, program is really intriguing, but it's only a set of our population.
Right.
I gave you my card, I work with unhoused folks every day, and there are, I think, clients that would probably really excel in your program, and there are ones that are so mentally ill, we have to get them to a place where they're even ready to start something like that if they want it to. And so, I had mentioned to Counsel Urban when he was going, I think that it's always wonderful to have lots of tools in the box, but I do think there are other pieces needed as well. And I just wanted to kind of state that because some of our most severely challenged folks in our town are not ready for that sort of program.
Sure, yeah, no, I agree. It's not for everybody, it's for some, just like therapy isn't for everybody. That didn't work for me. I mean, I was literally going to the therapist while I was under the influence with stuff in my pocket, they didn't know any better. You can't get away with that in the therapeutic community. But you're right, it's extremely important to make sure there is a number of different options available. For the long-term drug addicts who live in that lifestyle, a therapeutic community is great. For somebody who does have severe mental health issues, then therapy is great. Both need to be present. In the state of Utah, I am friends with all of the treatment facilities, and it's fascinating, this is not an exaggeration. They have me come in and talk to their residents in their treatment facilities and say things the counselors can't say. I'm blown away by it. Dave, it's been too much, can you come talk to our people? Tell them what we can't tell them. You know what I tell them? I tell them the truth. They say, come tell them what you can't, what we can't tell them. I tell them the truth. If you want to influence profound human change, two things have to be present simultaneously, love and truth. If all you do is tell people the truth, it can be considered mean. If all you do is love them unconditionally, it's permission to continue with the same behavior. If you bring the two together, you can influence change. We are not the end-all, fix-all. We help a portion of the population. The village will help a portion of the population. Treatment facilities will help a portion of the population. But for that repeat offender, like I was and many others, it's a great option.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, I think, I was told that a couple of people signed up to speak to this.
Two of Five Adams, Amy Mary Day. The Other Side Academy bills itself as a convention, a contemporary therapeutic community. Therapeutic communities, okay, people, I didn't do my own research, I just looked this up on Wikipedia, and I'd ask you all to do this, too. Therapeutic communities are fundamentally non-hierarchical. The Other Side Academy is a peer-based hierarchical organization. They're not the same thing. They call themselves a therapeutic community, which has a real name, a real meaning historically, and a contemporary therapeutic community is an entirely different thing. Thank you.
Jan Augsberry.
Awards received is irrelevant to me when I don't know who gave the award. Was it the Chamber of Commerce, Better Business Bureau, or The Other Side Academy? I hope you'll do critical thinking here. I highly doubt that there are enough people in Cottage Grove who would buy into this program to make it feasible, so I'm guessing the convicts will be diverted here. Is that what we really want? 49% of those accepted leave the program in the first 30 days. That would just add more homelessness here because it is unlikely that they will be able to afford the rent. Due to the housing shortage, landlords have their pick and most won't choose ex-cons. Since they don't accept government funding, um, actually, I understand now why they were here, so skip that question. Community strong, fought having the shelter here and having carried forward operated due to it not being local, yet here they are promoting on an out-of-state entity. Thank you.
Counselor Drea.
Thank you, Mayor, counselors. Ramadan by Ramunis Mubarak, which means Happy Ramadan, in Azerbaijani. I had the opportunity to serve in the Peace Corps in the secular Islamic Republic of Azerbaijan. So this time of year is particularly special to me. Ramadan started on Thursday, and that's when our Muslim neighbors and friends fast and focus on prayer, community. This time of year makes me think about my host mom in Azerbaijan in the Peace Corps. She was elderly, and she worked hard all day, keeping house, watching two young grandchildren, and she still chose to fast, even though she didn't have to because she was elderly and had health problems. But it was important to her to be able to celebrate Ramadan because her entire life growing up in fascist Soviet Union, she was unable to exercise her religion or even speak her native language, Azerbaijani. She was forced to speak Russian. So I just highlight that because it's really important and makes me value the freedom of religion we have in America, something that I see we can't take for granted, given the rise in anti-Semitic sentiment as of late. Another thing I learned this, this week, is that Southland Mental Health has contracted with Columbia Care to do mobile crisis response in Southland County. So they have a staff person there, Tim Black, who used to work for Kahoots, and he's helped other communities set up similar Kahoots types, mobile crisis response across the country. So I'm looking forward to seeing what they come up with, and that meets our unique needs in our region. As you can see, we have a lot of needs around mobile crisis, behavioral health crisis. In particular, as the discussion of setting up mobile crisis occurs, my mobile crisis response, one of the questions is, how will people access it? In Eugene and Springfield, it's through 911 dispatch, and some constituents have brought concern to me that maybe people might not feel safe calling 911, or, and that's just a really big concern for me. I understand our city's primary focus to staff up with law enforcement, with integrity, professionalism, that our community deserves and expects. And then I would hope that once we are staffed up, we have a chief of police leading with that professionalism, that then there'd be a concerted effort to rebuild the trust that has been sullied as of late. And I also want to add, there's two upcoming great events at the Armory, which is a lovely venue. This Saturday, April 1st, is the Relief, Family Relief Nursery Spring Gala, which supports their children and youth programming in our community. And then April 8th, there's a youth celebration that will happen at the Armory following the community Easter egg, so you can head over there. I appreciate the time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just tag on to the celebration on the 8th. If anybody has skateboard or bike ramps that they would be willing to lend out for that time, feel free to get ahold of me, and we'll coordinate picking them up and returning them and fixing them if anything happens.
Counselor Flack.
And I just, you know, I've not mentioned yet, the community sharing soup after a three-year hiatus is coming back. And Cindy, I'm looking over at you because I keep forgetting to let you know as well. May 9th, 5:30, Our Lady Perpetual Health Catholic Church will be doing our soups. I'm not sure how many yet, but there may be a return of the seafood soup, so pretty excited, looking forward to it, hope you all can come out.
Counselor Mary Day.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to express with the swearing-in of Officer Walsh that I think our police department is really on the mend and building itself from the top down with our leadership from Chief Growth. I've spoken to him at length, as well as City Manager Myers, and I believe overall, the situation, despite the feelings of many people, that it's been handled in a way for long-term remediation from a complete cultural exchange, and it's also been handled in a very fiscally responsible manner. So I give a big vote of confidence to the leadership of Chief Growth and the rebuilding of the department.
All right, I'm glad that you brought up the police department because I wanted to talk a little bit about that tonight as well. We have gotten a lot of concerns, and people are very upset, and rightfully so. And as you all know, it was personnel issues, and so anytime it's personnel issues and there's an investigation, we're not privy to the details of that now that they've went public. I do believe that this council does have the duty to examine what happened with these complaints, and in general, actually. When I read them all, you know, just that the chief didn't have the certification and was allowed to remain for six years without that, and a few things that, no yearly evaluations, and makes me question leadership. And I would like us to discuss this as a council in an executive session. I would like our city attorney present so that we can discuss. I think it's our duty to do that, to look into it, and make sure that going forward, that things are handled correctly. And if that is council coming into it more, or some kind of oversight, checks and balances, just the fact that it went on for so long is concerning to me. And so, I would like to set up a date for us to have an executive session.
Counselor Flack.
I guess I'd like feedback from our attorney about what we can and cannot do. I don't want to exceed our authority, but certainly I welcome having conversations as long as we're not exceeding our.
And I feel this way because by law, we cannot get together and speak and talk about anything. I mean, if I talk to two counselors about this, and then they go and talk to another counselor, then we've got a serial meeting. And so I want this all above board, but I do think it's our duty as a council to look into this. None of that has been done, and now that it is public knowledge, I think we have to do this so that we can bring the trust back to our citizens, that the council has done everything and looked at everything, and we can be in good standing with our citizens as a council.
All right. Anyone else? All right. Report from the city manager.
Just a reminder of the open house for the community center on April 20th, Thursday, April 20th, from 3:30 to 6:30. It is business after-hours night, so come early so you can leave and go to business after hours.
All right. Items removed from consent agenda. All right, this meeting is adjourned.